All right, if we can call the board meeting in order. Jenny, will you take the role?
Mr. Conrady.
Here.
Mr. Euquitos.
I'm here.
Mrs. Ott.
Here.
Mrs. Forst.
Here.
Mr. Tramelli.
Here.
Ms. Gorst.
Present.
Mr. Kaiser.
I'm here.
With that, I want everybody to join me towards the beginning.
Let's raise your hands to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get into the meeting, it is nine eleven. I would like to have a moment of silence for everybody. Thank you. All right. We'll be looking for approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Jenny, please take the role.
Mr. Euquitos.
Yes.
Mrs. Ott.
Yes.
Mrs. Forst.
Yes.
Mr. Tramelli.
Yes.
Ms. Gorst.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Conrady.
Yes. I'll also be looking for approval of accounts, motions for approval of accounts for the month of August.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Jenny, please take the role.
Mrs. Ott.
Yes.
Mrs. Forst.
Yes.
Mr. Tramelli.
Yes.
Ms. Gorst.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Conrady.
Yes.
Mr. Euquitos.
Yes.
All right, will we have any district? Will we have any district recognition?
Yeah, we do have a special school district recognition that we have for this evening. As Mr. Conrady referenced before, today is September eleventh. So in recognition of that, we do have a few words that we would like to share as a special district recognition. Sometimes called Patriot's Day or Day of Remembrance. September eleventh has become an annual day for many Americans to remember, reflect, honor, and mourn. The nation changed forever on September eleventh of two thousand and one. Many Americans remember a country before and a country after, and for many young Americans, only a country after. Terrorist attacks causing tragic loss of life at the World Trade Center in New York City, the Pentagon in sight of our nation's capital, and a quiet field in southern Pennsylvania led to conversations and reflection on American identity, patriotism, security, and service that still resonates today. So to honor the spirit of sacrifice made on nine eleven and to recognize the sacrifices that continue to be made by community members, first responders, and members of the armed services and their families, we unite today in observance of this Day of Remembrance. Thank you.
All right, I have some communication from the public. Kathleen Mahoney, would you please come up?
Hi. I've been working in the Marshfield School District for sixteen years, and today I want to celebrate our growth at looking at the whole student and embracing the science behind social, emotional, and mental health supports for our students. Many know Maslow's hierarchy of needs and how if basic needs, including food and shelter, aren't met, then it's harder for learning to simply occur. We know how important even feeling safe at school is and feeling a sense of belonging is for learning. We have better scientific understanding of brain development and how what occurs when children are young and how that can impact their ability to be organized, problem-solved, and yeah, learn. Learning turns out to be a scientific process. We're actively changing our brains. And so in order for those changes to occur most effectively, the whole student, their mental and emotional health must also be supported. So we're proud of the gains we've made in this area. In my sixteen years, we've added or shifted positions to make sure there are more adult staff and programs actively supporting students physically, emotionally, and with their learning. We've had trainings that make us more trauma-informed, that help us connect social and emotional well-being to our more traditional academic goals and intervention processes. These are amazing steps forward. Several of our PD offerings over the last couple of years have continued to help educators tweak their practices, learn, tweak their routines, so that more of their students' needs are supported as they learn. Some people who aren't in the trenches have critiqued that we are doing these things and are not teaching enough of the basics. Don't fault for that. We are getting better at supporting broad student needs as we continue teaching the basics. It's not one or the other. We should be proud of our academic strengths and offerings, and we should be proud of how we continue to learn, reflect, and grow in ways that support our students. Oddly, I had actually planned this topic weeks ago, but tragically, the school shooting this past week reminds me that we need to defend and continue our efforts in this area. After a tragedy like that, one of the first questions is, what support do the students have? What are the schools doing? Do the students feel connected at school? So I did want this to be more about celebrating all our growth in that area. I am very proud, sixteen years was part of it too. But let's continue to grow in this area, continue to support our students' growth as human beings as we continue to teach the academics. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Michael Wright.
The board. Thank you for the opportunity. I have to say, I was a little intrigued when I read the agenda for tonight, and it provoked me to read the policies that were going to get covered in your closed session item tonight. I found it quite interesting how last election cycle, a lot of those policies were broken by a seated board member, and nothing was done about it. So I'm just here to, obviously, we don't know what's going to be discussed in there. I must be something horrendous because it didn't bring it forth last time. So I'm just hoping that we're not seeing selective policy enforcement in this district. So everybody, just please keep that in mind, do things the correct way, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Jeff Shaw. Can you get it ready?
Oh, sure. I'm here to present my observations of the last few months on the school board and the upcoming referendum. July addressed this board about what I heard from NEXUS in June. The report indicated that there was a twenty-five percent strong no, twenty-five percent strong yes, and fifty percent willing to consider referendum. These percentages were given in no dollar amount. I believe that if seventy-two million figure was included in that, there would have been significantly more no votes than yes. After phone say for surveys, NEXUS results as follows, reported in Hub City Times. Seventy percent said improvements were a good idea, with sixty-seven percent being willing to pay seven to fourteen dollars per month in increased taxes. Later in the article, it was stated eighty-six percent agreed that the district's current buildings and facilities met the needs of educating today's children. I asked how we got from what appeared to be a fifty-fifty split to a seventy percent four figure, especially with eighty-six percent happy with the present facilities. At the end of the meeting, I was told someone would get back to me, I guess this just didn't happen. I also want to remind you that I've been watching this since way before this thing. I stood before this board about seventeen months ago and shared some hard data regarding concerns about the ninety-five million dollar referendum. A publication about North Central Wisconsin stated these things, "Teachers had the best pay scale and the best benefit package by far of all the Valley schools." That included Everest, Wausau, Stevens Point, Wisconsin Rapids. It also indicated that our administrators were very well-paid. Most concerning for me was the fact that Marshfield is the smallest school and is seeing a declining enrollment. Demographics also predicted there's going to be a loss in population for Wood County while Marathon and Portage would grow. Other information indicated Marshfield is well above the mean in the state of Wisconsin for property taxes. I was told that these issues would be addressed in the next Hub City Times article. Again, this did not happen. As far as the seven to fourteen dollar a month tax increase, go to your home, increase for your home, you'd have to have a house assessed between fifty-six and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to fall into that range using the dollar and fifty projected increase. I doubt that the majority of taxpayers will be seeing a seven to fourteen dollar a month tax increase. I've heard strong support expressed by certain groups who think spending millions of dollars, seventy-two million a present, will bring in more residents and students. I question this idea, having worked thirty-plus years at the hospital, a common denominator is why should I live in Marshfield when I can get more house or less money and the taxes are less elsewhere? I'm sure that the school district employees are in the same boat. I can go on regarding positions taken by speakers over the past few months. I'm not getting a lot of positive responses that the teachers are spending their entire eight to ten-week summer vacation on school activities. The idea that no one who might vote no on a, on a should be allowed on a committee is frankly a joke. There should be a place for just plain old taxpayers to have a voice. Hearing only what students and teachers want seems a bit one-sided. Please don't tell me that taxpayers had the chance during grand calls. But I'll be present, and I will not say that this was a random sample. During the prior board meeting, I heard administration at NEXUS talking about getting together to decide how to word these questions. So the questions were predetermined and interpretation was left to NEXUS. These interpretations were full of holes, as previously noted. NEXUS is not at all concerned about tax. The more they push for a bigger referendum, the more money they make. And I guess finally, I'd just like to say that all of you school vendors, and I realize a lot of you ones, you're here to represent taxpayers, I'm told, okay? When you're pushing a certain agenda, and that has been obvious, about people pushing a certain agenda for a certain group, I said, that's not what you were elected for. And I've got examples if you want to see them, but I will give them to you if you'll.
Steve Cattone.
Thank you. Later this evening, you're going to be asked to move to a closed session to discuss an attack by one of your own. An investigation being conducted by the very same lawyer that stated in a public meeting recently that she has a potential conflict of interest and is now attacking the very same elected official that pointed out that conflict of interest. We're asking you to vote no, to move to closed session, and thereby defuse this very contrived issue. We would like you to understand that if one of you can be set upon by the rest over policy differences, none of you are safe from administrative retribution. Several policy violations of current and past board members have been ignored. This includes a past board member discussing the contempt of a closed meeting in the parking lot out back here moments after the meeting was ended. All these infractions were ignored. It was political ideology in favorability with Dr. Christensen that protected them. The elected official being investigated tonight has voted against the contract with the real president of the school board, Dr. Christensen, on several occasions. Dr. Christensen, the self-appointed president of the school board, does not have the authority to set agenda. It's not his place. It's the role of the board president. The superintendent does not have the authority to apply or dictate disciplinary actions on elected officials. It's not his place. That is the role of the elected officials, not their subordinate. He has refused via email to involve himself in other infractions. What's changed? This is the same elected official that made a motion to table changes to Title Nine until the issue has been played out in the courts. The policy is written in part by the investigating attorney. This attack is being made to discredit an elected official who's simply trying to provide truthful information to concerned parents. After voting no on the motion to move to disclose, to close session in order to protect not only this board member, but also yourself, a motion should be immediately made to explore resources available to replace the legal counsel currently in place. If she cannot be honest about a potential conflict of interest, what else is she withholding? A second motion should also be made for a vote of no confidence in the current president of the school board. The vacuum created by selecting the current president was intentional. Call it, pick it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any more changes? Okay, with that, do we have any announcements?
No announcements. No announcements.
District staff and reporters.
Yeah, just one quick item under the superintendent's report. In partnership with the Marshfield Area Coalition for Youth, which is also referred to as MACI, and the Everett Rail Marshfield Public Library, the school district will continue to promote activities surrounding the initiative called "Let's Keep Talking: A Parent and Caregiver Series." During the "Let's Keep Talking" series, local experts present programs on various topics where parents and caregivers have an opportunity to ask questions and obtain additional resources. All of community members are invited to attend these presentations, which are all held in the Felker Room at the Everett Rail Marshfield Public Library. Detailed information about the series, including dates and topics, all of the programs start at six P M. on the dates listed. All of that information is available on the school district's website at www.marchfieldschools.org. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll be looking for a motion for acceptance of gifts. Run through this. John Bean Alignment Machine valued at seventy-five hundred dollars from American Auto Sales and Service for the high school automotive program, three hundred and fifty-five dollars from Stop Construction for the Ace Academy, six thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars from the Marshfield FFA Alumni Chapter for the FFA program, a hundred dollars from the Marshfield Fire Department for the Grill Soccer Program, twelve thousand four hundred and seventy dollars from the Marshfield Tiger Booster Club, seven hundred dollars for gymnastics warm-ups, seventeen hundred and seventy dollars for the wrestling singlets, six thousand dollars for football supplies and uniforms, four thousand dollars for huddle services. Lincoln Elementary, items for the school store valued at fifteen dollars from Ryan and Andrea MacGyver, items from the school store valued at a hundred dollars from Nathan and Melon Carter, boys' basketball trip to Orlando, two hundred and sixty-five dollars from Terry Hanson, five hundred dollars from Adam Easlon, eight hundred dollars from Ann Kohlstedt, football camp t-shirt sponsor, two hundred and fifty dollars from Randy Lemoine Agency, two hundred and fifty dollars from Hewitt Meat Processing, two hundred and fifty dollars from Simplicity Credit Union, and two hundred and fifty dollars from the sports team. Looking for a motion.
Want to do this up with a few things? Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Jenny, please take the role.
Mrs. Forst.
Yes.
Mr. Tramelli.
Yes.
Ms. Gorst.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Conrady.
Yes.
Mr. Euquitos.
Yes.
Mrs. Ott.
Yes.
All right, Dale, looks like we'll be moving to finance for a meeting, I think.
Okay, the difficulty is Sam Lehman, our business director, that's his correct title, always presents this, the finance budget is where there are so many unknowns in terms of what the state is going to contribute for the run, enrollments in and out of the district, and so on. But here are some factors that we talked about in tonight's finance meeting. There is a reduced, a section of 4K at the Head Start program. This led to a cost saving to the district of forty-two thousand dollars. Interest on the iPad leases is three thousand dollars less than anticipated due to the district paying off the lease a year early. An AED will be purchased and installed as central office. This came at the recommendation of our district health staff. Central was the only building in the district without this defibrillator, and the cost of an AED is twenty-one hundred dollars. Increased enrollment out budget by seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, this is an item that is listed in the budget. We don't know for sure how many persons we will have enrolled out of the district, nor, the contrary, we don't know yet at this point how many we will have enter the district under open enrollment. Enrollment projections, especially related to open enrollment, are difficult to project at this time. Increased open enrollment out budget, I'm sorry, I mentioned that. Staff and salary benefit elections for new hires comes in with a cost savings of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-two cents. After making the adjustments above, the projected surplus was seven thousand twenty-seven dollars. This was put into the regular education transportation budget. Again, the word projections comes up. Projections have the property debt increase at four point seven eight percent. These are projections until the state finalizes district property valuation and state aid in October. The budget is currently balanced. Reminder to everyone that the school district annual budget ends at the end of June, and we begin another financial year in the beginning of July, so we haven't been out yet for it long. We're waiting for the unknown factors, as I mentioned before, the third Friday pupil count, which will take into consideration some of those ins and outs of open enrollment, private school voucher levy amount, and again, the in and out of the open enrollment. The third Friday pupil count will take place on September twentieth of twenty twenty-four. School district equalized property evaluations will be certified by the Department of Revenue on October first, twenty twenty-four. General equalization aid will be certified by VBI in October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. There are also some, there's an annual review of public hearing documents for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. This is required of all public school districts in the state. It will be posted in the Marshfield News-Herald during the week of nine sixteen through nine twentieth. Some of the items of note will be projecting a reduction in both expenditures and revenue in our Fund Ten, which is basically our major school district fund, largely due to the ending of federal relief dollars. Debt service funds shows a final payment on the energy efficiency projects that were undertaken in twenty fifteen. Final payment is scheduled for this spring. Cap projects funds show revenue of thirty thousand dollars and expenditures of three hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars roughly. The district is utilizing this fund to deliver some capital projects without impacting on the general fund budget. Food service fund has a healthy fund balance of six hundred and nineteen thousand and forty-nine dollars. Revenues are currently projected to exceed expenditures. But again, we're always just one equipment failure away from a big surprise in that area and a big expense. And finally, the budget for Fund Eighty is currently projected to be four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Programming and services there include two school resource officers. We share that cost with the city. Middle school athletics and transportation from the district to the Boys and Girls Club as part of a potential new partnership. That is something that is being looked at right now by the district and also some surrounding, I guess, of community partners, I guess would be the best way to put that. That's it.
Thanks, Dan. There, policy. You've been busy.
Very busy. Luckily, it was the second reading of all the policies listed. And surprisingly, when we came together, we didn't have any additional concerns that needed to be discussed or looked over. So on behalf of the committee, unless somebody has a policy that they'd like to discuss separately, we are bringing forth all of these as one action item to be approved.
All right. So if I take the right, I have a motion on the floor. I'm the other committee, line item B through S for approval.
Yep.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Jenny, please take the role.
Mr. Tramelli.
Yes.
Ms. Gorst.
No.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Conrady.
Yes.
Mr. Euquitos.
Yes.
Mrs. Ott.
Yes.
Mrs. Forst.
Yes.
All right. Do we have anything more?
No.
Thank you. Curriculum and instruction did not meet. The settling and safety did not meet. Employee relations did not meet. All right, we are down to new business. I will be looking for a motion for approval of the re-
So there's no retirements, so, no, nothing needed on party A of new business? Well, we do have some resignation, two resignations.
Yeah, I usually read these off as an individual board member, not as part of the committee. I would move, as an individual board member, that we approve the resignations of Selvana Parker, a teacher assistant, bus aide, and also Mariah Lawrence, I believe is the correct pronunciation, food service worker, cafeteria worker. Those are the two resignations I move for approval.
A second.
All right, motion, second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, Jenny, please take the role.
Ms. Gorst.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Conrady.
Yes.
Mr. Euquitos.
Yes.
Mrs. Ott.
Yes.
Mrs. Forst.
Yes.
Mr. Tramelli.
Yes.
Okay, approval of employment of new personnel. Once again, this comes to you as a motion from an individual board member, not as a committee as a whole. Approval of employment of the following. Leslie Dulman, teacher assistant of special education. Courtney Mahard, or Marge, I'm sorry, Courtney, food service cafeteria worker. Jacqueline Miller, food service floater. Diego Muniz, teacher assistant. And Mary Young, teacher assistant of special education. And Crystal, I believe it's Wisland, teacher assistant of regular education. I move those forward as an approval of employment of those following individuals.
A second.
All right. Motion, second, for approval of employment of new personnel. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
What do the acronym D H H stand for?
That's a part of hearing.
Okay, thank you. And it says a shift from a community site to somebody that was employed outside of our system?
This would be the site that's no longer in, is no longer functioning. So when we brought the program to Nathanville, it did require an assistant as well, where in the past, it was taking care of the site, the community site.
Okay, that would have been the program at the-
Graceville?
Graceville, turn?
Head Start.
Head Start? Okay, Head Start, okay. Just for clarification.
Any more discussion? Jenny, please take the role.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Conrady.
Yes.
Mr. Euquitos.
Yes.
Mrs. Ott.
Yes.
Mrs. Forst.
Yes.
Mrs. Tramelli.
Yes.
Ms. Gorst.
Yes.
All right, with that, I'll be looking for a motion for approval of twenty-four, twenty-five mental health consortium.
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion. This contract is set to automatically renew. I don't think I saw that provision in our other contracts.
That's correct, yeah. That is, that is a new updated adjustment within the contract proposals here.
Why are we, why are we automatically renewing this?
Because they haven't, well, because over the course of the change of this consortium, we haven't had any changes with this particular partner has been, is the main primary provider that we have.
But we don't know how, what our facility setup is going to be. We assume it's going to be the same, but we, we can't be certain of that. So what I'm saying is, should we make sure that we have the facilities that we're required to under that contract before we just renew it automatically? Because we have some requirements under the contract as well. I think it would make sense to make sure that we have what we need to provide before we just automatically renew it.
Well, and I, Tracy, if you can chime in a little bit, but I would just note that total number or capacity is a component of the relationship that we have, and we make it work. I don't know that facility capacity- I don't know that facility capacity would eliminate the need for, or the partnership of having the folks from Children's Wisconsin still provide services for our students.
Yeah, perhaps. I think, you know, the need and the benefit to students outweighs trying to find a spot for the provider to provide those services. And I believe that Children's, I believe, is at the high school mostly, and so those services are typically, I think they're usually within our guidance office, and we have available space. That's not something that I would project would change. But if we did, I'm certain that we would be able to find the space for the provider. But it does say, under, I think it's number eleven, under termination, that either party may terminate the agreement within sixty calendar days.
Right.
So, I mean, that is an out, I guess, if needed, also.
That answers my question.
Is there any other discussion? Kevin, please take the roll.
Mr. Frimardi?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ott?
Yes.
Mrs. Forst?
Yes.
Mr. Tremeling?
Yes.
Ms. Forst?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
All right. The Marshfield School District Board of Education will entertain a motion to move into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five, print one, print F, to provide financial, medical, social, or personal histories of disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where print B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations of, and Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five, print one, print G, to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. To discuss and take action, if appropriate, regarding public records requests, alleged board member misconduct involving board policy one forty-three, one forty-three point one, one forty-four point five, and one thousand two hundred and eleven, and steward misconduct discipline. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved, we go into closed session.
I have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing Nun Jane, please take the roll.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ott?
Yes.
Mrs. Forst?
Yes.
Mr. Tremeling?
Yes.
Ms. Forst?
No.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Frimardi?
Yes.
Close session, I believe, will be going to room C. All right, we reconvened and make an open session. Item B, there will be no action from the closed session, so at this point, I would adjourn.
I'll second, Kathy first.
I have a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing Nun Jane, please take the roll.
Mr. Tremeling?
Yes.
Ms. Forst?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Frimardi?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ott?
Yes.
Mrs. Forst?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Frimardi?
Yes.